What will you do, or if you are an incumbent, what have you done to encourage business development within the city? And would your plan include marijuana dispensaries? Why or why not? And we drew numbers, so Rita's gonna go first.
Hi there, I was kinda surprised to hear that that was such a hot topic round here. So I had to look into the marijuana dispensaries and see what is going on with them. We're really divided on this one. Either you are very much for it, or you're very much against it. April and I were just speaking earlier about how we've not found any middle ground. So personally, I would not be in favor of having marijuana dispensaries in the city of Riverview only because we have such a small amount of business space available. I would prefer something more family-friendly that could be in that spot instead. Hopefully, we can work with businesses and get some things going. I know we have talked about how our hands are tied with the Riverview Commons. That is such a prime location for us to have businesses up and running and going, easy to get to, easy to see, and I'm really hoping that I can help get some progress done on that so that we can get some new businesses in there and get the overview. When people drive through Riverview, if they see new businesses, maybe a Third Friday type of option where we can have a business night, maybe once a month or something, everyone can come out and maybe if there's food trucks involved at different businesses, you can do some shopping, get out and do some eating, go to the parks, maybe have some different events like that. So those are just some of my ideas to try and get some new business to come to our city. And hopefully, we can all work together and get some work done. Thank you.
Well, what I think I would do to help with the business here, my wife and I try to always, my wife of 45 years, very patient, well, you're forgiving person. We try to always buy local, we try to stay away from chains if possible. That helps the city if we buy here. The other thing I would do is try to make sure that we were always available to talk to them, to see what they need, the things they need to help with their business. And whatever we can do that possibly is legal, we'll do that. As far as marijuana goes, I'm against it, and will now vote for it. I watch it since I graduated in 1965, and I've never tried it, but I'm not going to. And I just think it's wrong, it damages your brain, whether anybody wants... They usually don't tell you this stuff, it does to you when they ask for your vote to put these things in. There's three parts of your brain in the front that it damages, and once it's gone, it doesn't come back. Plenty of it on the internet, if you want to look it up and find that out. The other thing is, I think we have a lot of good space here that we can use for things that are family-friendly, that will make money for the city, and will bring people in here. But we have good people here, they're kind, loving, and they're helpful to each other, and that's good. The other thing I think I would do is, I think I'd encourage all the people here to write your congressman, local, and state, and federal, and tell them, hey, this is what we need. Where are you at? I think that's one thing that would really be helpful. I live on Long Store. Anytime you want to come and talk to me about anything, I live between Ray and Colster. You're allowed to come there and sit down with me on the porch, come in the house and talk, ask me what I believe and why, or tell me what you think, and I'll be happy to take it in there. Thank you.
As far as business goes, one of the main factors, something that's critical for it, is networking. I believe we need to start by talking to the current business owners, seeing what challenges they face, what we can do for them. And as far as new business owners go, we're trying to do the same thing. What we can do to help bring new businesses in. I think Rita brought up about certain areas, our hands are tied. We gotta dig a little deeper and see what we can do. Besides that, I'm sorry, as far as the marijuana issue goes, I'm not gonna bang the table for marijuana by any means. I've worked in a refinery for, since I was about 18 years old, so wasn't allowed to smoke, going there, hair test, all that stuff. So it's not my thing, and I definitely don't think it's good for kids to be surrounded by it. I think Riverview's actually spoken on this issue and voted for it, or I'm sorry, voted against it. I would put this one to the people, and if it stays that way, good. And if any way, shape, or form it does come into the city, we'll make sure it's tasteful. You know, we don't want a big neon marijuana leaf on forks, shoot anything like that. We'll make sure it's zoned properly, away from the schools, all that stuff. Thank you.
Alright, so as far as business goes... Yeah, sorry. So as far as business goes, new business and current business that I've spoke with, you know, it's, I don't want to bring another topic up, but I'm huge on this code enforcement issue. I think it's a huge problem, and I think a lot of you all feel it's a huge problem as well. You know, it's hard to get anything done if people just say, no, don't go to Riverview because you're gonna get cited, this, that, and the third. But outside of that, they say, we just gotta reach out. We gotta, we have small businesses here. I was at a meeting I was graciously invited to last night with a local small business owner. And it's just about getting everything together, getting everyone on the same page. I think sometimes we get a little lost in the hustle and the bustle, and we don't talk. It's that thing about community, sense of community. As far as marijuana goes, revenue, we got a lot of issues going on, and money is at the top of the list of what we need. So I also agree that it should be something that's brought to the people. I agree most things should be brought to the people if possible. I would not be against it if it is going to create revenue, and it is legal. Anything that is within legal, is the confines of the law, I'm pretty much okay with, you know, personally. Now, you all would have to speak on that, that's what I would want. And that's basically it, my stance on that.
Bringing business to Riverview is not going to be easy. We have some buildings who are owned by companies that aren't even in Michigan, much less in Riverview. They have no interest, sorry, that's a bug. They have no interest in lowering the rent on those particular buildings because they're using the loss as a tax write-off. So I think as city council, there should be maybe some sort of legal way that we can reckon with these business owner, or these building owners, not business owners because they're just empty buildings, but with these building owners and get them to lower the rent to a reasonable amount so people want to rent there and want to open buildings. Also, like Dave mentioned, code enforcement has been an issue, and the costs to get the certificate of occupancy in new buildings. I had the privilege a few months ago of helping a friend of mine open his business, A R C Hobbies, right on Ford Street. And my mother-in-law was the chief building inspector for the city of Trenton. So she has some inside knowledge into the cost of opening a business in the city of Trenton. And sad to say, Mike and Jeff could have opened A R C Hobbies in Trenton for a quarter of what he paid to open his business in Riverview. But he wanted to open his business in Riverview, so he did. And as far as the dispensaries go, because I only have 30 seconds, so I'm just gonna skip to the next topic. That is a decision that I believe should be left to the residents of Riverview. If they wanted marijuana dispensaries, we would open one. Somebody could open one, and revenue is a good thing that we could get from that. But if people don't want it, we're not gonna have it. Period.
I know, but it's going down the line because it's never going back. Let's go down the line.
We'll go down the line then. So two things. First question was, what will you do to enhance the business development? My first thought process here is, new businesses that are interested in moving to this city, or if we can get them to be interested to move to this city, is giving them some sort of discount on taxes. I mean, realistically, if we can get more and more companies in here moving in to completely fill all of the empty, voided buildings and lands around the city, we're certainly gonna make more revenue. And we all know that this is tying to the last question. Everything that we're gonna talk about today is pretty much tying to the last question, which is landfill. And I'm not gonna get into it now, but what I'm saying is, we need to look at all different revenue sources, including marijuana dispensaries, on whether that's the way we need to go to make up the difference for that thing being closed over there. That's kind of where I'm at with this. So tax breaks for people or companies that wanna move, or businesses that wanna move in there into our community here, not long-term, but short-term, just get them in, get the feet on the ground, run in. Marijuana distributor or just dispensary, let's look at the facts. Let's look at the House of Dingle, for example, in Lincoln Park. How much money did Lincoln Park make on that, revenue-wise? That's what we need to know about, that's what we need to see. Because whether you like it or you hate it, it's not legal. And if that can bring some revenue to the city that we may need, I wouldn't put it out of mind to anybody to think about it. I don't do it, you know, everybody has their own ideas on processes and whether they do it or not. But that's now, it's a legal thing. So if it's legal and we can make some revenue off of that, I would say we also, city, need to make a decision on that.
First part of the question is about business. Riverview is a jewel, and we promote business in a number of ways through the internet and such. I'm looking at about 37 businesses that we have brought in in the last two years. And I could name them all, but I don't only have two minutes. But I can tell you that one of the businesses was the Groovy Pooch, and the owner is sitting over there in the pink, right there, and she's one of the new business owners here. As far as the marijuana, they, the professionals don't call it marijuana, they call it cannabis. So I know it's legal, that's the first part. The second part is, do the residents want that in their community? That's the key. I wouldn't make that decision. I would put that to the residents. But a better way of bringing in funding, and I'm not gonna go to the landfill yet, I'm saving that one, would be the grow units. A grow unit is a building that is where they grow it. It could be back over here on Arkhamus property, out of sight, out of mind. It can't be so close to schools or homes. And what happens is, is they grow it, they don't ship it, nobody comes in and can buy it. You don't have, how do I say it? Undesirable people laying around and smoking it. When the product is done, they transport it, they have to buy a ship, they have to rent a shipping company to disperse it out throughout the state of Michigan or wherever it's going. The building, you will never know that it's even a marijuana, cannabis building unless somebody tells you. It'll just be a regular old-looking business. Inside, the security is, cops swipe through every single door. Cameras more than what the airport carries. It's just a tight, and you don't have everybody with the rifles walking around the place. So I introduced our city manager to it the other day, to one of the top growers in Michigan. And it would still have to go to the residents, but I want them to have this one money maker opportunity. It's legal, but I would still like to have the residents vote on that.
First, first, you know, I'd like to address a misconception that the city's done nothing. In 2000, the gentleman back there created a committee, I don't know if you remember, in City Hall, it said Vision 2000. And they met with all the businesses, the schools. They opened it for all residents, and they all sat down and they built a plan. Build businesses, build a landfill, wanna make money, what to do in the community. And they followed that plan. In 2012, I was the manager, Mayor Duran back there, and his council gave me a directive to revisit that. Community development, we sent out invitations to the school, businesses, everything around to bring in opinions from our community on what they wanted to do, including the landfill. Not the whole council agreed with it, but the majority did. The fact is, the mayor didn't at that point. He said, we run into this issue, he was absolutely correct, that we're running into now. But they went with the direction they received from the council, or from this committee, on what we're gonna do in this community. Now, in my view, the best thing to do, because a lot of people have a lot of opinions here, we get community development, open the committee again, and let's see what the community wants as a whole. Not the forest, not the east side, not, not, doesn't run, not any of them. All of them together, including the businesses and the school, and take that direction. Now, as far as marijuana is concerned, I was a police chief, I'll never be in favor of it. I've never seen anything good out of recreational marijuana in the 27 years I was in the police department. Now, I'm sure there's a debate on medical marijuana, but as far as recreation marijuana, I don't agree with it. However, that's a vote of the whole council, not one of these people up here. And whether I agree with it or I don't, if four votes say yes, I will agree with it. Because I have to if I'm on the council. Thank you.
You know, as far as marijuana goes, it should be put to a vote of the people, as far as I'm concerned. If they're in favor of it, move forward, if they're not, do not. But in regards to our efforts to bring in new businesses, I think we've done everything we can do. We don't own those buildings, we can't tell them what to charge for rent. All we can do is enforce existing codes to make sure at least the outer appearance is appropriate. And sometimes that's difficult to do, it takes court action. Again, we don't own the property, we can't give them. And as far as giving them tax credits, just because you give the owner of that property a tax credit doesn't mean he's gonna pass it on to that person that's serving that building. But again, I think we've done everything we can do. We have worked with various companies within our city to assist them in what they try to do.
Hi, everybody. I work a lot in workforce development at a local community college, and I sent something, an email, like in 2019, about, has anyone considered becoming a Michigan Economic Development Corporation Redevelopment Ready City? I did not get a response from the few staff members. Mr. Swift did respond that he would forward the information. I have information about it if anybody wants to look into it. Michigan Economic Development Corp. is for businesses and it's for communities. Right now, there is CARES Act funding everywhere, Wayne County has tons of it. There's community development block grants that are available. So I think we really need to try hard to get the resources from the state. I think Governor Whitmer is very interested in helping. So has anybody that's currently on the council working with Michigan Economic Development?
No, it's a great idea, and I don't know... I haven't worked with them in the past, but it sounds like a great idea. And if we can do something like that, that's gonna, you know, have an opportunity to get more businesses in here, get us on the scale, get us on the radar there, certainly, that'd be a great idea.
Anybody else?
I was actually speaking with some of the council beforehand to see if we had a grant writer on hand. I was looking into, with all the monies that are available right now, now is the perfect time to apply for some of those grants, get some of the money, and start using it to help our community so that we can not be so focused on one subject as our main source of income, which we'll get to later, of course. But I would absolutely love to get some kind of active virtual for that.
Yeah, it seems like Trenton, Windott, a lot of the other cities have investigated. I don't know what the process is, but I certainly think a lot of new businesses move to Trenton, and they skip right over us if it's easier. So we need to make it easier for them to get going in here. So, keep going.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You wanted to answer the questions?
Oh, go ahead.
One of the positions we have is the city manager. And when the ideas come in, they normally will go through the city manager, and during any meeting, he will present those to us. If you are going to this individual or this individual on council, we have 17 different things, and 17, and seven people go in every direction. If you bring it to the city manager, he will present it to the council. And that's how the system works. So anything that, where did she go?
Here I am.
So anything that you have, that you want to address, or possibly bring to the city, and that goes for anybody, that they need to speak with the city manager, and it will be put on the agenda, and then we will discuss that. And probably you would come down to also give us information. Because when you just talk to one person or two...
No, I sent it to two staffers, I believe it was, business, we have a business development person. I don't have the exact names, it was a couple years ago, but...
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I didn't get any responses from the Riverview staffers, whole-time gig staffers. And I did send it to the mayor, and he said he forwarded. So I felt like I followed the right channels.
And that was two years ago?
Yes. I'll send it again.
Yes, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay, my question's on business development. I think if we, Mr. Trobley has excellent idea. You know, we need new ideas, whether you're for them, against them, as a community, we need as many new ideas in this town, and let's figure out how we're going to run the city. Do any of you have any new ideas as far as business development as it relates to reclaiming polluted land and doing something with it?
I think, I think we need to get with Ms. Dingle and all our other people and say, what are we doing to clean this up? It's been this way for years, it needs to change. You know what I'd like to see over there? I'd like to see a school over there that teaches trades. I have kids, you know, grandkids that wanna learn trades. The, all the places now are screaming for trade because they haven't trained any for years. There's tons of stuff we could do like that. I don't know if that development would help with anything like that, that group, but there's other groups that might do it. We might even be able to go to Ford and GM and Chrysler and say, hey, look, you know, are you willing to help us start a school here, train these guys? So when they're out, they can come in and go to be in the workforce, things like that. We've gotta get ahead of this, get this place cleaned up so people look at it. And I wanna see that road over there on Jefferson, I'd like to see it not be, you know, an obstacle course anymore, so people might wanna buy over there.
Like has already been said, we need to find out what land is, what land expect, what land is polluted, and we need to get it cleaned up. There are government grants, federal government grants, to help clean up land. We need to know how to clean it, we need to get it clean so that it can be built on. We do have a lot of polluted land, and it needs to be cleaned up. And that is something city council could do. That is something that could have been done 10 years ago, or 20, or even 30.
I'm gonna speak, just for a second. The two things I wanna say about that, here's my response. Whomever was in that land before, or left that land the way it is, that company's responsible, or should be responsible, to make sure that that land is back to where it was when they originally planted theirself on that land. Which means that company is responsible to make sure that they're taking out all that bad soil and all that bad land, replenishing it with what it needs to be, so it can be developed. That's number one. And number two, if we can't get that done, there is an alternative to that. I heard of an idea down there on that corner, putting a solar field in there. What a great idea that is, because you don't have to, you don't have to excavate the land, you don't have to move it, you can just set those solar panels right on top, and money comes right into the city, more revenue.
The Arkhamus property, three different sections. One of the largest sections is directly behind my house, 80 acres. That's the one that backs up to the Lloyd Carr Parks on the south side. All three pieces on the other side of the railroad tracks to Jefferson, that's contaminated. From Jefferson to the river, that's contaminated. Now, they still own the property, they're still paying taxes on it. When John Dingle was here, John was in a big fight to get the super, the super, the super fund to not only clean up the McCloud property, but to clean up those three sites also. Well, after John passed, it all went silent. So now, I'm working with the mayor of Windott and myself on the property that's between Jefferson and the water. They're gonna be dredging out that water, dredging the river right there. Now, I'm trying to figure out why. My reasoning would be that a group wants to build on the McCloud property, the Crown Enterprises, which everybody knows is Manny Maroon. Now, I wanna get that piece of property between Pennsylvania Road and where the old Firestone, if you all remember, the old Firestone Company. It's quite a large section. I have plans for that. The second reading is Monday night, let's see, today's, Thursday? Four days from now, on the Monday night council meeting, the second reading and adoption is for that. That is one of my plans. Obviously, I haven't told you what it is, but after it's adopted, I will tell you. On the other property, which is right behind my house, they can, they can put in different things. I'm against marijuana, but it's up to the residents. And the rest, I will continue on business as we get to the land preserve. Thank you.
As far as the property on West Jefferson's, West Jefferson's concerned, I was involved with John Dingle, and we were too small for the super fund. And he tried to get Washington to agree to open the super fund so that we could address those polluted areas. They know, the city knows where all the polluted areas in the city is, they have it all mapped. And one thing that has not changed, that I would say you should talk to the state of Michigan about, is if, under current law, if a company owns polluted property, they pay taxes on it, they have their fences up, they're allowed to have it. They can't make businesses, the cities cannot make businesses, clean it up. We don't have the law to do that. Under state law, as long as they own it, they pay taxes, it's theirs, just like your home is. So it has been addressed, we've addressed it numerous times. It looks now with the Maroon, or Maroon stuff that's happening in Trenton, I think the super fund may be opening up now, I'm not quite sure. I haven't followed it that closely. But the property that you're talking about on West Jefferson started to be polluted in the late 1800s, when it was okay just to dump stuff. So Adolphino is not interested at all in us acquiring that section of their property. So I just thought I'd give you that.
You know, and as far as the cities, even if they wanted to sell it, we wouldn't wanna buy it if we had assumed their responsibility. If it was economical to clean that property up, they'd do it and sell it if it were valuable piece of property. But the cost would prohibit it. Now, Trenton, Riverview, and Windott, they've all applied in the past for that super fund money, but it just wasn't available. Now, when Maroon came in with his project, right? It pays no people, I guess, he did get some money to do some cleanup. But again, we've tried, but we didn't have any success. We don't carry that kind of cloud, and either just Trenton or Windott. But it's not for a lack of effort.
Thank you. So to continue, I think Councilman Trobley started by talking about teaming up with Windott, and I believe Mr. Toll said, you know, we, we smaller cities don't have the clout. What we need to do is get together with all the communities, because it's definitely affects all of us, not just where we, the surrounding communities, and that's a little bit more of a power pool. I also believe we need to look into things like eminent domain, and maybe take it as ours. I understand there's gonna be some costs to that, but at the end of the day, if it makes Riverview money and can ensure a better future, I think it's something we definitely at least have to look into. Thank you.
This one has already been answered pretty well, by...
This one has already been answered pretty well, by taking more than a minute. So, uh, as far as Maroon is concerned, he was clever enough to make it a railroad area, and that's how he got his money. Thank God for three hundred dollars. So, I was concerned that if there ever was an opportunity, naturally, River View, the state of Michigan, could do it. If there was some way to put up, maybe you're talking about, I'm not for that, but if there was some way to get a manufacturing site, and could even be built on slabs, that wouldn't require going that deep into the soil, maybe the technology will come. But I would think that we would keep an open mind to see if there's a technological way, or a political way, but certainly, Anopino, when they shut that down, they shut that down under federal laws. Nothing that we could do anything about eminent domain. So, uh, it's out of our hands that way, but certainly, it would be nice if that could be done. I hope that ends the question.
Okay. A couple more questions. You, you all are so excited, and you're so invested in this, and I, I really love your enthusiasm. I think we have, what, two more questions?
Three more.
Three more questions, okay, come on up, ladies.
So, I have a question regarding-
There we go.
-comments about the medical marijuana allowed in our city. I'm a tad alarmed by some comments made up here, considering the overwhelming evidence, medical evidence, to the contrary. Um, I know one person encouraged people to look up information on the internet, and I would also encourage council to do that as well. There's a great study done by Harvard, and by the University of Michigan. Um, so, I guess I don't understand why safe access is being denied. Uh, it was never put to a vote, and everybody seems to say that it should be put to a vote, but we were never given that option to begin with, and I would like to know why. And I would like to also understand why at least half of you are so against something that has proven to have so many benefits for so many people, including River View residents.
I wasn't talking about, uh, medical marijuana, I'm talking about, because if you get the medical marijuana in here, the next thing that's happened, you're gonna have free use of it, it's gonna, it's gonna come in, it's gonna be sold over the counter. They're gonna, the places are gonna be here, because that's always, I just don't think-
I encourage you to look at Ann Arbor.
I just don't think bringing a vice in here helps. I don't wanna put a casino in here, and I don't want to put a medical marijuana. Well, medical marijuana, I can understand, that I can understand, 'cause I know it does help. I'm not against people using it for that. What I am worried about is, is what's gonna come after that. It's just a step in the wrong direction, I think.
Based on what?
And they can get it other places besides here, there's plenty of places to buy it, they don't need to come here.
That means other places are getting the money, they don't-
Right, yeah.
The trash, it's legal in thirty-seven states. Thirty-seven states it's legal, thirty-seven, including Washington DC.
Okay, I can, I, I wanna answer that, because I brought up the, the grow part of the, the medical, of the cannabis.
Which is good evidence, I agree.
And, that's where the money's at. These dispensaries you see, uh, down in Lincoln Park, or, or River Rouge, or whatever, that is the wrong picture of what these establishments look like. You are correct, if you go to the west, Ann Arbor, even La, uh, uh, Lan, Jackson, and, and those areas, it's totally different. It's, it's like walking into a brand new shopping center. I've seen them, and, again, when, when the vote was put out, it was put out to legalize mari, uh, cannabis marijuana. That was the only thing. Now, if you need, if, if you're looking to put it on the ballot, that's, that's a totally different issue. Do you want the marijuana disp-
You're gonna get enemies again.
Correct, but that was to legalize only. Now, dispensaries are a different thing, along with the grow areas. That's totally different than legalizing it. The, the residents, even in River View, said yes to legalizing. But that didn't come with putting dispensaries in, or anything like that. I'm against marijuana, but not against the medical marijuana, and a number of people have abused the system, and that's, and-
People abuse every system.
Right, right. I can talk for this, but one minute is not gonna get it, so-
Yeah, yeah.
And no one's taking forward and asks us to put it on the ballot, if that's what they want? That could be a controversial. As far as the dispensaries goes, it's not quite as profitable as a lot of people believe.
I encourage you to reach out to River Rouge. I posted a lot of facts on the resident page while the topic was being discussed, so I encourage you to reach out to the, to the city clerk, Mrs. Bowler. She'd be happy to speak to you about how much money the city brings in.
Yeah. I'll do some research on it.
I would appreciate that.
But again, the state is the big benefactor, not, not, not the communities that are hosting, as far as dollars. Jimmy, I mentioned grow operations, and I thought it was kinda funny. A lot of people were wondering, you've seen lights when you look over in Canada on a clear night? You should look it up on the, uh, internet, it's factual, okay? I'm just gonna read, read it from you. What is the orange flow over Canada? The light, according to Canadian officials, comes from greenhouses used for cultivating vegetables, food, and in the past couple of years, marijuana, most of it turned over to marijuana. So, they had to change the regulations on greenhouses to decrease the light.
I would just, uh, I would just like some information, because I was being told that it's a, a very low amount of money that a city gets, and it, it's, it's been very, it, it's been very downplayed. So, as long as I could get some of that information from whoever has it, I would greatly like to review that.
Okay.
So, with the dispensaries, we've been told, when we look into it, that the state usually ends up getting most of the revenues from those sales. So, if you can give me some information showing that the city does profit more from-
So, it needs to profit more than the state in order to allow it, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm just, I'm just letting, I just wanna say that it needs to be on par with any other business. As long as they're bringing in the same amount of revenue to us in the city, as they park in on, or subway, whatever's up on Fourth Street, things like that. So, if they're on par, and the city votes for it, and that's what the residents want, then that's what the residents will get, is what they want. It will end up going to a vote, but you guys should have the final say.
I am not willing to toss out any ideas to bring money into the city of River View. Um, I don't care if it's marijuana, or if somebody wanted to open a brewery down by the river. I am not going to toss out any ideas to bring money into the city of River View until it is proven to be something that is, A, bad for the city, and B, something that the people definitely do not want.
I wanna touch back about, one of the commenters stated something about grants, and free money that's out there available. Jim Trobley stated that if you, meaning we, the residents, had any ideas on how to share the information, on how to get grant writing work, please contact the city manager. Why do we, the residents, have to tell the city manager how to get grants? Why doesn't our longstanding city manager know about writing grants? Why don't we have a dedicated grant writer that can bring free money into the city to offset some of our budget expenses? Why do we have a budget writer that's on, not budget, but a grant writer that's on contract to the city, that is very specialized in their scope of knowledge, that isn't broad, isn't able to write grants for parks, isn't able to write grants for all of the free, again, free money is available to municipalities? Why does our city, a manager, not know how this is done? And he's been here for a long time, and we're not holding him accountable? Why are we pointing fingers to the residents? That's my question to you.
Can I answer that?
Good question, there's that, I'm not one that might.
Thank you for the question, but on a response, I don't believe that, that was my answer to the lady that was sitting over here that had the, uh, one company, I never, I don't believe I ever mentioned the word grant. I mentioned that she needs to bring it to the city manager, and then, the city manager would talk to her, put her on the agenda, and then, she could come to one of our study sessions and explain it, uh, what the program is. I, I don't believe I ever said anything about, uh, uh, grants.
Talking about grants, but when you said it, that it was grants, the commenters were talking about grants.
Yes, but that, but that would come in when she was invited to a study session to talk about that project that she's working on, or anybody else that's working on a project. I'm, I'm all for the grant writing and all that, and we have grant writers that write grants in the city. I gotta stop, sorry.
Okay, we have one more follow-up question, then we're going to move on. And this is to Councilman Trobley from Brian Webb. Is it against River View ordinance to have a commercial, sorry, cannabis grow in River View? Is it against the ordinance to grow it commercially?
Brian, this is what I remember, and I don't wanna be false on it, but that we have a designated area in the city of River View for dispensaries. So, if that's the case, I don't believe that there would be any ordinance that says that you couldn't do it. It would have to come in front of the, the zoning board, and, and a number of other boards, but we have it, and I believe it's in the northeast corner of River View. And people, people own that property now, so I don't believe there's any property there that they could put one in that area or facility, unless the property, uh, was, was bought out by whoever's gonna run a dispensary. But dispensaries only pull in, according to the state of Michigan, uh, twenty-eight thousand dollars per dispensary. Twenty-eight thousand. If you look at three point billion, five million dollars, what we're, what, what we're trying to look at here, if that landfill closes, uh, you're looking at a lot of dispensaries, a lot of them. And I don't think River View wants to be the town known as dispensaries.
How about a lot of houses and less garbage? I'll get to that here.
Council member, what do you specifically plan to do to support the small business owners? I've been a small business owner in the city for several years. I've reached out to the city manager, I've reached out to council, and the only response I've received ever in all of these years was from the mayor. I had the support of one in the interest of none. So, saying I support you, this is gonna be great, but what is the plan? And let me also inform you that I'm in the cannabis industry, I'm a cannabis consultant. I have also been asked to speak as an educator to council, and removed from the agenda, and then, uninvited. A lot of speak has been spoken, and was happening tonight, and is very, very ill-informed information. So, as a small business owner, what is your plan specifically to support us? 'Cause at this point, I'm one foot in, one foot out.
Wyandotte has a, I believe it's a monthly thing for their, their businesses within the city of Wyandotte. Why can't River View have that? We have all of the space around, well, it's blocked by the building, but around the pond, and small businesses could come, and we could have a monthly thing, even a bi-weekly thing, where the small businesses come, they don't have to pay a fee. Small businesses come, they promote their business, they get to meet the, the people who would be shopping at their businesses, or working with their businesses. They, you know, they, they learn what people want. And, but, the people need to know that the businesses are, that, the businesses are there.
Oh, what is your plan? That's, I understand that.
Opening of-
I was the one who hosted the meeting last night, and we had twelve people.
I, I was not aware of that meeting, Dave told me about it today, and I was like, what? I didn't hear anything about that. Um, but, yes, my, my idea is to have a, um, a weekly or monthly thing. Yes, um, around, around the pond, where people can come promote their business, and then, people can come and shop those businesses, and the thing has bred something to stop now.
So, I had spoken earlier about, um, small businesses and trying to bring more to our city, so that that can help bring more revenue. And I would love some more information, if you, um, have it, if you can talk afterwards. I would love to meet up with you and hear some of the stuff that you have to say, I'm really interested. Um, but for all the small businesses, I would love to see, like I brought up earlier, that Third Friday Field in River View. I would love to see all the signs in shops, and you know, people love showing off their cars, you know, you can park them up along the corridor, but not driving all up and down and all crazy, 'cause we get enough traffic. But just park them, people can come and look, you can talk to the businesses. I would love to see us, you know, if you get a punch card, you can shop at this place, this place, and you, if you visit five different types of River View business, you know, you get a discount, you get twenty percent off, or you get something. Just so you can get around and meet all the businesses. The business owners can meet the community, and we can find out where you guys are, what's going on, and then, you guys know what we need, what we want, and hopefully, we can start working together in the future.
A question for you, uh, specifically, what should the city be doing for you that they haven't done? Can you give me some-
Specifically, they-
Yeah, can you give some examples?
They should be responding to my outreach for support. I have gone to the city in years past, and proposed events of, uh, on a monthly basis, on a quarterly basis, and I was told, go ahead. And then, they turn their back and walk away, and then, I'm left hanging dry. I have also specifically offered educational sessions to inform the community and council members regarding cannabis. Were you, we have used the right verbiage here, too. It's not marijuana, it's not a dispensary. If we're gonna be specific, it's a provisioning center, that's the law. So, I have reached out and have been, had the door closed on me. As a small business owner, and I also live in the city, I'm paying taxes every which way to the city, I've put my suggestions on the table, and the only one who has ever supported me has been our mayor. I've been told by people whose job this is, they're paid to do this job. Go ahead, do what you wanna do. That's, that's not, that's not support as a small business owner.
A lot of things are one of the residents.
We have a community development director, and you should communicate with him.
I have.
Okay, if you have anything there, and you're not getting satisfaction, you should report it back to the city manager, within following years, if you're-
I have.
My daughter's failed several times with no response regarding our high school projects.
So, that's why I'm asking, what is your plan specifically? Because that's all done and over. Here we are now, what is your specific plan to support us? I'm looking for new space, we've outgrown our space. I will either continue to look in the city, and I operate a cancer support center, or I will take it elsewhere. I'm very involved in the community.
You know how much-
So, I need to know what my, what is my reason for staying here as a small business owner? I don't get, I, all, the, the, most attention I get is, uh, my tickets, my ordinance ticket.
Well, I don't know how much you're getting, but again, we can't control the rent rates. We're, you know, we're not the holders of properties.
I own my property.
Okay, well, did you say you need to expand it, or you need additional space?
I'm looking for a different space. So, I'm either going to continue looking in the city of River View, or I will look elsewhere. So, what, why would I stay here? What is your plan to support me, is my question.
Hi, uh, specifically what I do for you and other business owners, number one is, like we talked about before, communicating, networking. Uh, the communication is say, hey, what issues are you facing, what can we do? As far as the networking, looking for new space, we all know a bunch of realtors right here in River View. We can make it easier for you, put you in connection with people. I know you can go online and find a realtor and all that stuff, but we can support you in all those ways. I think the biggest thing would be, um, hearing what your, what your needs are, and how we can help meet them. You know, obviously, if something isn't possible or feasible, you deserve an answer as to why they're not, why we can't do it as well. Uh, definitely shouldn't be invited and taken off and not heard, absolutely ridiculous.
I know, it's still about, what is the plan?
Ma'am?
Yeah.
I, I have not heard of your issue. If you could please leave your name, someone will be contacted here within a week.
Or less. Well, there must be some way to advertise for these businesses, to let people know- Well, there must be some way to advertise for these businesses to let people know where the rad, the address. I know you have a problem with parking. So we need to do, when we have problems like that, we need to find a way to give someone more parking, find a place in the park, or another building they can get to. There's gotta be someplace, I mean, I don't know about renovating.
That wasn't my question, though. I'm not looking for help finding a property. I'm saying if I don't get support and help as a small business, as business connection meetings, as a monthly event, I can find my own property. And I'll either find another one in the city, or I'll find another one in another neighboring city that does Third Fridays, that do fairs, that do markets, that support and don't say, oh, that's great, you wanna host a monthly event all year long? Go for it.
Well, I would like to see something every, at least once a month for our businesses to meet.
But are you, but what is your plan?
Well, we get the city council. Let's get together, talk about it, get someone to plan it, get with you and the other business owners, and say, will you meet here this day at seven o'clock for two hours with your business, with food or whatever that you have to offer, information, whatever, and bring it there?
There's a lot of interest in a lot of these topics. I wish we could stay here the whole night and discuss all of them. I'm gonna go ahead and put this out to a vote of a show of hands. We have a couple of other questions regarding the police department, regarding code enforcement, or we can move on to the land preserve.
Move on, land preserve? The land-
A show of hands, everyone who would like to move on to the land preserve.
Who wants to move on?
Okay, we're gonna move on then. You just gotta roll with it. Okay, question four, or two. Okay, next week is the Zoom call with Wayne County regarding the land preserve expansion. Regardless of the county's ultimate decision, at some point, the land preserve will reach the end of its lifespan, and the lost revenue will have to be made up. Will you commit to putting a plan in place to implement when that time comes? What are some ideas you would explore, or what ideas have you explored as an incumbent? Go ahead and start down at the end, and then we'll work our way down.
Excuse me. There's no way anybody can probably answer that question in one minute. I would request-
We're gonna go back to the two minutes.
I would request at least three.
We're gonna go back to the two minutes, because I'm sure-
Let's try for two, but if it goes in two and a half minutes.
There'll be plenty of follow-ups, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna have a lot of time to play. Starting with you. Talk very close to the mic, because there's a lot of people far back.
Look, there's been a lot of discussion in the past about what happens when the land comes. There was a plan put together, not gonna replace the income, to help generate some of those funds back. One of them was, for example, on Grange Road, south of Pennsylvania, there's nine-point-nine acres. You could build thirty single homes, estimated tax revenue would be about fifty grand. Sidley Road frontage, twenty-two-point-seven acres.
No one can hear you, could you hold it right up to your mouth, please?
Okay. Sidley Road frontage is roughly twenty-two-point-seven acres. We could put forty single homes there, or a hundred and seventy-five multiple-family homes. The estimated revenue for that would be fifty to a hundred and forty thousand dollars. The golf course, there's forty-eight-point-five acres. You could place a hundred and sixty single-family homes. The estimated revenue for that would be about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Riverview Street, there's various lots, which has a potential for twenty single homes, estimated revenue's only thirty thousand dollars. Every one of these pieces of property, you'd need a developer on, if he wants to develop houses. I don't think you want the city to become the developer. That's just one of the areas that we've looked at. Other areas we've been looking at as far as cost control, that's monitored through all of our budgets. You know, I've heard the implications, maybe things are fat. I don't know where they're fat at.
Very complicated. It's complicated to explain what happened, because you're looking at, you're gonna have to redo services, you don't have a choice. To bring in the landfill, to bring in the money to landfill add, you're talking three-point-five million dollars. If you figure a Hardee's, or a Wendy's, the only money that the city gets minus the county and the schools off of the current Taco Bell is five thousand dollars a year. That'd be seven hundred, seven hundred Taco Bills we'd have to bring in to make up that money. So this is an issue that's gonna have to be taken by the whole council, by input from the community on what they want to tolerate. Do they want to shut down a library, do they not? Do they want to raise taxes, do they not? That is a decision that we as a community are gonna have to make, not the council. So those things will all have to be brought forward and discussed. That has been discussed to a point, so far, we're starting to develop plans on what we're going to do. But we don't know until we see what happens with the landfill. Now, there's another thing that we can do, is we still can approve the landfill, which we're looking at, and that doesn't mean we have to do it. But to get a phrase that Jim wants me, we don't quit one job before we have another job available. So just because we get an approval doesn't mean necessarily that we're going to do that. I think we ought to meet as a community and discuss, do we want to go in that? Do we want to go full force into landfill? That was what was discussed previously. Do we want to gear back? What can we bring in? Those things all need to be looked at. And I think that's where if we brought the group together again, just as we did in 2000, and we all discussed it, we'd get a direction we want to go in as a community, not one particular pressure group. We gotta look at the whole community and make those decisions.
Landfill, the jewel of the city. Believe it or not, it is the jewel. It's been subsidizing your taxes for many years, and I'm talking many, before I was on council or anyone else. And nobody ever complained about an expansion, even the last expansion. We invited people down, nobody showed up, so we figured that's what they want, an expansion. Now, we're in a different day, a different age. And what Councilmember Workman said was, you don't cut off your nose despite your face. We have a three-point-five million dollar deficit that if that landfill closes. If you look around the community, we don't have the property for big business, not at all. All you have to do is drive around. The biggest properties that we have, once again, are contaminated, and we do not own them as a city. So as I was stating earlier on the dispensaries, thirty-eight thousand, you need three-point-five if you do the math, it's a hundred and ten dispensaries. But I want to go farther, because we have made, over the years on council, including when the former mayor and the former councilman, and there's another former councilman that was, he's sitting over here, too. Hold on, I'm gonna say this. Everything that we come up with, the residents don't want. I'll tell you a couple of them, and the Coachwood residents already know this. We've talked about an amphitheater on the golf course, and we would make a lot of money just in the parking. But here's the deal, the main concern right now is noise from the landfill, not the smell or anything like that, it's the noise. What does a concert place bring in? Noise. Number two, we've offered to build single-family homes that would probably be worth three-hundred-and-fifty. Oh, you gotta be kidding me.
I know, it goes fast. I just want to remind everyone what the question is, regardless of what Wayne County's decision is next week, because we know that the ultimate decision is made by Wayne County. Are you going to commit to make a plan for the time that it is at its end of its lifespan? Because we know that eventually that's going to happen. So we'll move on to the next.
I want to be committed to that from the Coachwood residents.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the next.
All of these people were here.
We're gonna move on to the next candidate, please.
And I said, there's a lot more residents that are here that are hearing my saying, and it's being livestreamed, so all those residents are seeing it, too. I've made that commitment.
Go ahead.
Okay, everybody, so new to listening to this, trying to come up with ideas, we're kind of all in the same bucket here, trying to come up with ideas for three-point-five million dollars, right? Everybody's kind of like, yeah, it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen, but what are we gonna do when it happens, right? So first and foremost, Wayne County does have a control on this that we are going to have to worry about, because regardless of what we think here and what we say here, if Wayne County says it's expanding, it's expanding.
No, no.
No, no, no.
We can say no.
Okay, okay. So what I'm after is, if they are gonna, if they have that much control or push to get it through to expand-
The final say?
We have the final, Wayne County does.
The council has a group, yeah?
Yes, they do.
So the council has the final say?
Okay. Then we're gonna have to work together, like the plan you're talking about, we certainly have to come up with a plan, and that's not gonna be one person, it's not gonna be two people, this is gonna be an entire committee, and the community, and all of your ideas, and trying to get something that comes together. Now, the one thing I've looked into, the one thing I've heard about is the QCI. Okay, this QCI, from my understanding, wants to build a nice facility down there and start to dispose of the trash that we have, okay? What that means to us is, it's my understanding, of course, there's a cut in how much money we would make off them coming in to take our garbage and dispose of it. Okay? So I'm looking at ideas, and all I'm full of right now is ideas. And I'm thinking that there's a lot more thought, a lot more investigation, a lot more commitment to making sure we're making the right decisions for what happens to the city of Riverview here now, and when and if that land, you know, the landfill continues to go for till its end.
Okay, so the question is, do I commit to make a plan when the landfill reaches its end? Absolutely. When the landfill reaches its end should be within the next eight years. I hate that thing. Everybody hates that thing. Nobody likes watching the garbage go-
Smelling the garbage, because, I mean, really, we can all smell it.
We can all smell it.
And the dust, too.
And the, yes, the dust and the stink, and I heard yesterday that garbage does not fly out of that dump because it's covered. Maybe it doesn't fly out in the middle of the night after it's been covered, but I've seen garbage fly off the top of that hill and land somewhere else. Maybe it was a Meyer shopping bag, maybe it wasn't, who knows? But I've seen it, so I know it happens. Don't tell me it doesn't. But do I commit to making a plan? Yes. Do I have one now? No, unfortunately, nobody has one now. That dump has been open for fifty-three years, so anytime within fifty-three years, a plan could have been made. And when that dump first opened in nineteen sixty-eight? Thank you very much. When that dump first opened in nineteen sixty-eight, it was not meant to stay open forever. It was for Riverview garbage and Riverview garbage alone. And at some point, within the last fifty-three years, some council for the city of Riverview came up with the idea to open our dump to other communities, which made it fill faster. And yes, communities outside of even the state of Michigan and the country of the United States, which made it fill faster. So they expanded it. Now they want to expand it again. If the expansion goes through, we do not have to use that land for the dump, my time is up. But if anybody wants to continue talking about this, I'll be here for a little while after nine.
So this landfill issue is actually what got me fired up to actually run. It's something that I have been able to see my entire life, so it's something that I would love to see gone. And what disappointed me the most was knowing that when they opened the landfill, they had the foresight to set up all of these accounts- to, because they knew they were gonna have to take care of it, and it was gonna need money, and so they set all of these things up. But what they didn't start doing was actually setting plans in place so that we could shut it down and have something take over. We do not, nobody wants their taxes to go up, nobody wants to lose all the free services or discounted services that we have. So the expansion, whether it goes through or not, we need to start getting a plan in place. And QCI is one thing that we have been looking into, but we don't want to exchange one problem for another, so we are still looking into any and all ideas. I know that they did this a few times throughout the years, and I've been told to check a bunch of file bins sitting somewhere at City Hall. And believe me, if they let me in, I will go and pull those out, circle through them. Or I'm more than welcome, you can Facebook message me, I will speak afterwards. If you want to give me your phone numbers, emails, whatever, I am open to any suggestion so that that can get closed down as soon as possible, but we have to have a plan in place. So if there's anything that anyone has, I'm always open for anything.
QCI claims that they will make, will even get two-and-a-half million dollars out of what they do. There's another company in Poland right now that we're all, they're also looking at, I have no information on that yet, but QCI also claims that if they want, they can start repurposing the thing, and eventually the hill will be flat again. But also, but we won't make as much money with that. But at the beginning, two-and-a-half million dollars, and then what, we need another million? Well, I'm sure we can start coming up with something, we have plans to do things. I mean, there's business coming in, they've got a bunch of businesses, they've come in, I think they've done a pretty good job so far getting business in here, but we just need to do a better job, and we need to get together and fight for what we want, and that's what's gonna have to happen. But we need to be wise, and we need to be informed so that we can make wise decisions and not off-the-wall things. It has to be what's best for the whole community, not one street, not me, not my kids or my grandkids, but it has to be what's gonna make the community viable.
Excuse me. It kind of terrifies me that we need commitment from candidates and incumbents to make a plan, but anyway. What we're gonna do here, or what we need to do, the money and the revenue isn't gonna come from one source, we're not gonna get a three-point-five billion, a million-dollar business in here. We're gonna need a lot of sources of revenue, whether they be from QCI, whether they be from businesses, whether they be from dispensaries, whether they be from homes. We might need a little bit of everything to make this work. One thing we can afford to do is keep this problem going and growing. Our city will fail at one point if this is our only option. If the trash hill is our only option, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, but it will, and sooner than later. So the plan is, for me, and I hope everyone would agree, is to get every form of revenue stream together and try to come back to that three-and-a-half million. Thank you.
So it's unfortunate that we can't address our first responders tonight, but maybe we'll have time for that at a later date. QCI, okay, this amazing thing that I'm reading, right, and Mr. Rose came and sat down with current council. We don't know if that's the answer, but we're being told on a lot of these issues that things are being looked into, they're being looked into. Well, if we got ten years, I don't know what it is, but we're gonna have to, like we were talking earlier, we gotta stop looking, and it's gotta do. And QCI is committing to thirty-five percent of their estimated twenty-five to thirty-million dollars a year. That's a lot of money. That's more than two-and-a-half, that's almost nine million dollars. You currently have three-and-a-half coming, and John actually reached out to me because he wasn't exactly sure what was going on. I was only sitting in the meeting, that's the only reason I know these numbers. If that is the case, it's not gonna cost the residents, so we're being told it's looked into, I hope that it is, but it needs to be, you know, but it needs to be seriously looked at, because zero cost to us as residents, zero cost. Two-hundred-and-forty jobs coming into the city. If Ford Motor Company can give you a waiver to get your cousins, your brothers, your sisters in a little bit before the rest of the community, then so can we as a city, okay? Lastly, tripling revenue, what's the risk? Well, let's delve in. I want to have Mr. Rose on twice a month, because I need to know if this is rainbows and unicorns, or if this is the real deal, because I'm excited. That solves your first responder problem, that solves your bringing in business problem. Tripling your revenue, you can, money talks, and we gotta get it in here. Tripling your revenue, you can, money talks and we gotta get it in here. And it can't be talked about for nine and a half years because it takes four years to build the facility.
We have some more follow-up questions?
Now, a, as you know, this is probably the most divisive and controversial thing that's faced the city in forever. And I think this was started in 1968 by a vote of the people. We've done expansions since, however, they had minimal impact on what goes on in the city. This one will have impact. I think it's a good idea that we consider putting this on the ballot, not, not right now, maybe a year from now, giving everybody a chance to make, uh, you know, an informed decision. And then you're hearing from the people, and it's, I don't want to say it's taking the pressure off you because it is a lot of pressure, I've been on, I was on for 20 years. But I think, really think you should really consider putting it on the ballot maybe next year. So that the people decide. And I think the city should do a better job of informing people than postcards and the else. With the end of COVID, I think you can start getting into town halls and in-line sessions. So I think that's really what we should do.
I have two questions on QCI. QCI is not a wise decision, are, um, they are a company that burns trash down, plastics, tires, to extract petroleum chemicals. QCI is treating one problem for another, according to this commenter or questioner. Um, she asked, will you personally commit as a candidate to truly doing your due diligence and research this company and their business model?
So everybody, I am a safety manager, a safety environmental manager. This is what I do, and I've just started to hit the, the top of this thing on QCI to see what they're about, what they can offer. I, I've already read a little bit about it, and, and they may be burning or anything else, but they're gonna have an entire air, you know, control flow system that will never allow any of that pollution to get. And realistically, there are, there is a lot of equipment out there that can do that nowadays, where you can contain each and every piece, molecule of that pollution, so it doesn't hit our air. So I don't think that is a worry. What we really need to see is whether these guys are legit. I actually went on the website, I put a notice in there, I posted a message saying, "I need more information. I wanna see a place that's doing this currently." They're saying Livonia, there's a tire recycling something or another. Nobody's got back to me yet. So I want more information because that's the only way that we can make an educated decision on this. It's, it's, yeah, it's pie in the sky. Everybody thinks it's unbelievable, right? Everybody, it's unbelievable. How can you bring a company in that's gonna take your garbage away, make all that flat land, and give you money? Ready? How do you do that? This company, if it is the truth, and that's what they're saying that they could do, we have to at least give it a shot, we have, not a shot, we actually have to think about it as a community, not just the city council, all of us as a community, to see if that is what we need to do.
So speaking to will we make a commitment, absolutely. Um, I have three small children in our school systems here, and my number one priority is their safety and making sure that our town is taken care of and, like I said, not exchanging one problem for another. So we are absolutely looking into, will this take over the money in the first place? Will they actually be building this building and their facilities without us having to pay for it? A lot of it does sound too good to be true, so please believe me when I'm going at this, looking at it as if it's unicorns and rainbows, because it just seems too good that they'll come in. So we are looking at everything, we are researching it, we are backing up the research. We've multiple people looking into different things, and hopefully we will find a solution so that we can close that down.
So, QCI, uh, and I'm not gonna argue with anybody's numbers, but I would really like to see those numbers on paper instead of just hearsay. Uh, that's number one. Two, I've tried to look up this company a number of times and I can't find them anywhere on the internet, not even the Livonia company, except for a picture of an office and, and nothing else. Everybody else that's here, I've already committed to the Coachwood residents that we would follow up on this QCI, uh, and, and that's what I'm gonna do and that's what the council's gonna do. We haven't let them go yet. Also, our city manager, our, our finance officer, our attorney and everybody else has been in contact with them again in the past week, but we're not getting any information. That's, that's the problem. Now, uh, the biggest, the biggest trash hauling company in the United States, Waste Management. Do you think, if they knew about this, they would stop the middleman and put this up themselves? And they wouldn't have to worry about QCI or anybody else? The first time they came to us, it was $60 million and we were gonna have to fund it. Knowing no information, if we would have, we could have broke the city, like, yeah, like basically what's happened over in Allen Park with the big theater. Now they're coming to us, 75 million, they're gonna pay for it, they're gonna do everything. That's a lot of change in about two and a half years. So yes, we're gonna, sorry, I'm done again. Uh, yeah.
What website? All I find is where they go, where somebody owes him money.
So the only information that I have on QCI currently is the information that was presented in the city council meeting. But I can guarantee the people of Riverview that if I were on city council and something were found to be dirty about QCI, if we got into bed with them and they started doing things that were not good for the city of Riverview, whether they started spreading pollution or trying to bury things, like I've, I did hear somebody on Facebook say one time that they off-site their barrels of sewage, basically, and bury it. And if I were to find out something about that, I guarantee you the people of Riverview would hear about it because I don't keep secrets and I don't lie. So I have a big mouth, and if I hear about it, Riverview will hear about it. Hopefully, QCI wouldn't do something like that, but if they did, that would be bad news. But I definitely wanna look more into the company and I would make sure that our due diligence was done before we got into bed with them.
It's paramount, council people in general do their due diligence on everything, you know, obviously this included. Uh, besides that, I would like to mention, uh, there was a meeting, I'm sure we can find the exact date. It's been a couple of months now, but the CEO was on there with the council. Uh, he did give a lot of information, uh, definitely a good starting point for anyone that wants to learn more about QCI. Thank you.
Just if I could reiterate that meeting that we were in. Uh, I could be wrong, I wanna say late March, early April is when we were first hearing about this. And Mr. Rose, the CEO, was on, it was very intriguing stuff. Um, I'm glad that current council, like they said, have, have, they came back to that and now in the last week they've been looking into it. This needs to be definitely addressed. We need to have been looking at it because it sounds great. It, it might be too great to be true, but we can't wait till the 11th hour to do our digging. Let's do it. I'm excited about this. I don't know if it's gonna be right or it's gonna be wrong, but I'm gonna tell you what. There's a lot of people that make a lot of money to look into things like this, to, to read through contracts, to make sure that we're not getting duped as a community. And, I mean, 75 million dollars now, not 60, but they say everybody's going green, right? That, that's the wave of the future? There's grants, and this guy, if, if he's lying, then guess what? We don't move forward, we gotta go other, but, and I'm not saying that's the only egg in the basket, but I'm fired up and I encourage everybody, I will do my best to find out the exact date of that meeting because he spoke for over two and a half hours. And I mean, I'm very, I'm, it, it was April?
Yeah.
Anyways, uh, like, well, let's just, let's, I'm excited, this is, this is good stuff.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is, um, for our incumbents. In April, QCI offered to do a feasibility study that would have taken 90 days, so it would've been complete, you know, about right now.
Yes.
Uh, why didn't we take them up on it?
Yes, yes.
Incumbents, incumbent.
First of all, I, first of all, he didn't communicate back, there was communication. If you watched that meeting, I specifically asked him if he would entertain a royalty agreement with him doing the cost and us conceding some share of the profits. He indicated he would. He hasn't gotten back in reference to that. You know, for, I, I wish that what he represented was something that was factual. In my opinion, it's not. Because if it was, and there was that kind of money in there, you'd have people building these all over the places and it's just not happening. We, uh, we did pursue it, and we asked for information. We just recently got the information, that's the reason that the meeting, that you just heard that we were in a meeting. That's the reason for it. We finally got the information from him. I don't know what's happened, we haven't had a meeting to where we've been updated, but we were waiting for him to respond back, and yes, we called him numerous times, we emailed him numerous times, he did not respond.
So what I was saying just here a little bit ago, we've been in communication with him. He hadn't responded to us, uh, it was a long meeting, uh, it got out of hand, uh, actually. And I didn't actually even get to hear some of the answers that this, uh, uh, bill was talking about, the owner supposedly, or a salesman for QCI, I don't know what he does. But this is the reason, and you heard it from these two right here, that's the exact, we're still in communication. If he wants to do a feasibility study or whatever, we're not blocking him. We don't block anybody, none of business owners or anyone. That's what we're, we've been trying to say up here. Except for what?
Provisioning centers, that is what.
Provisioning centers, only because we didn't know, we don't know about it. We, I didn't know about it, you can, anyways, I didn't know about it. And neither did the rest of the council, as far as I know. Thank you for that.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is appreciated. Okay, so, um, Jason O'Day.
Could I, could I, could I just ask you?
Oh, sure.
Yes. Okay, um, hello, everyone. I have a simple question to ask you, um, I'm running for Trenton City Council and I know for a fact, talking to many, many, many people in Trenton so far, no one in Trenton wants this landfill to continue. Um, do you guys wanna work together and try to solve this problem?
Yes.
Yes?
Absolutely.
Awesome, that sounds great. Um, let's do that.
Okay, we already had that discussion.
Yes, we did.
Okay, uh, we have another question, um, hopefully you can answer it. Can we close the landfill to other downriver cities?
I can answer that. First of all, why would we do that?
So we can have our present landfill for Riverview, we don't have to expand anything. Now you can start.
Okay, all right, that's, that's a great response, I like that. But here, but here's my response. You start taking it away and just, Riverview is using our landfill. Where am I coming up with the other revenue that all these other communities pour into the landfill that subsidizes your taxes? Now, can I finish? Please, 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 I, I, you know. Anyways, how, how does that subsidize the rest? Listen, I have a number of questions that I would like you all to ask, ask anybody that's out there. That I have, one, how do I tell the senior citizens that we're gonna raise taxes because the landfill is... Are you not reading this? I mean, all right, I won't go there. But, but, but I think you all get it. I'm done.
Okay, would we ask the audience to refrain from commenting while our candidates are speaking? It's much appreciated, thank you.
We were having the discussion between me and Mr. Johnson.
It's very much appreciated, but can you save your discussions for later? Because everybody here has something to ask. Thank you. Okay. Why not place the expansion of the ballot, or, I'm sorry, why not place the expansion on the ballot next year? Can, do we have an answer for that question? Can we place the expansion on the ballot?
I'm not currently on city council, but on Sunday I was told that in order to put something on the ballot, somebody has to bring it up, a second person has to approve or support their motion, second the motion, and then it could be voted on by city council. But first, somebody needs to bring it up, April?
Somebody on the council currently or a person in the audience?
A person on the council needs to make the motion, a second person on the council needs to support the motion, then it can be voted on. And it takes four votes, yes, because it's seven and there needs to be a majority. Thank you very much, Jim. We can all do that.
Okay, Kim, I ask a question, oh, sorry.
Um, and what we were told on Sunday was that nobody has ever made that motion. Okay, I would make the motion if I were on city council.
Okay, a follow-up to that question. Can there be a petition from the people of Riverview and other downriver communities to bring that before the council? Is that a plausible rule of order?
You can have a petition to get your governor to his office, why wouldn't you be able to have a petition for that?
Okay, I don't have any issue with putting it on the ballot next year, but you, you'll have plenty of opportunities if it's passed, if you don't wanna go forward. Just follow the budget, it takes money to do that. Don't approve the budget for it and it won't happen. I couldn't answer your question, that's never came forward. Uh, I'm sure we can get back with you with that question. I'm sure we can get back with you with that question, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't answer it because it's never came forward to me.
Okay, thank you. Yes, just a show of hands, who is in support of the expansion of the land preserve? Just a show of hands, who is in support of the expansion of the land preserve? Okay, thank you, raise them up high.
The people in the back are asking you to raise your hand high.
Okay, and if you, if you, um, thank you, sir. If you are not in favor of the expansion, please raise your hand.
Absolutely not, this is no way.
If you believe that it is not a yes or no question, please raise your hand.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Should we allow them to respond to that?
No, we have two gentlemen.
Hi, thank you all for coming in today. Jerry Coyne, I lived in the city for 70 years. I wanted a nice quiet place to raise my daughter, so far I'm happy here. I wanna talk about Local 324. Most people don't know what 324 is, they go to the landfill. They think they're Department of Public Works employees, they are not. They are from a union. The city sued in federal court, uh, City of Riverview versus Local 324 Pension Fund in Sixth Circuit US District Court to get out of paying for the pensions and benefits of people who don't even work in this city. This city pays about $3 million a year for them to run the landfill. I'm from the Northeast, a very corrupt place, I fled that place. I was shocked when I found out that this happened a long time ago in the 1980s. Probably got a cabin up north out of this corrupt deal. My question to the city council and the folks running, will you do every possible thing to kick that corrupt union out of here? And any of the workers who want to stay can be city employees because while this city is broke, it is absolutely asinine that we are paying $3 million a year to a union and this city has even said in federal court, you can look up the case, if anyone wants to see it, I can pull it up on my phone after we're done here. Why the heck are we paying for benefits of people who don't even work in this city? This is so corrupt. What do y'all think about that? What do you all think about that?
We paid them $3 million.
A year?
A year. If the landfill were to close tomorrow, we would lose 3.5 million dollars. So we get out of that contract and we close the landfill, we only have to come up with an additional $500,000.
Well, no, because you still got to pay benefits for them and they deserve to get paid a fair wage, whatever that would be, make them city workers, put them in the city on whatever they do for 401K or pension or whatever. So there would be a cost to it, but obviously by having a middleman, we're paying more. And I can also tell you whether QCI is a real thing or not, the union had a hired goon who came to that city council meeting to, you know, poo-poo all over the plans that that guy had. So there's a conflict of interest there, so there's a lot going on here.
Okay, so $3 million, we saved $3 million by getting out of that contract.
That's, that's what they are costing us, yeah, if they make city workers.
We rolled those employees, or those people into being city workers. How much would they, how much would they make?
A whole lot less than $3 million to you. Less than $1.5 million less. That's the reason they went to 324. There's no corruption here. The suit he's talking about was in reference to pension life benefits. They started to sue saying they, they weren't responsible and they did not prevail. Your cost per hour, if you compare it to our city workers, is actually less for the time you had the burden that we currently have. Again, that's misinformation.
I'll come in on the other part where he's talking about some, I don't know what you call them, some goon or somebody came in?
Yes, he was a goon, yes.
Well, just for everybody's information, he was our landfill engineer and we're city councilmen, we don't know that part of that QCI. So we had our engineer come in there and question him to get the real answers and ask the right questions. We, we, QCI, we, yes, we brought him in as part of our landfill, from Chicago. So the residents, all you and everybody watching, could hear the questions. So the, the corrupt, stop the corrupt stuff, please. It's not corrupt. Listen, I've lived in this city all my life, my heart's in this city. And I'm not going anywhere until the big man takes it. But that's the last thing I want to hear about the city of Riverview raising its corruption because it's not happening here. Thank you.
All right, if you all go ahead and respond, then we've got one more gentleman with a question. We're around now.
It, it just goes, all goes back to due diligence. When stuff like this is brought up, it shouldn't be brushed away and saying it's not happening here. We need to look into this. Jared seems like a very intelligent individual and it seems like he brought up a very clear point, something that needs to be looked into and addressed. If I was on council at that, I would do that tomorrow. Thank you.
So kind of the other side is that this type of stuff, finding out about it is not okay and it should not be brushed under the rug and it should not be, there's nothing weird going on here. So there has to be some change that needs to be looked into. And I've actually asked around, and they said that the city paid us $6 million in front, so they're going to help and be done with it. And then we can put our own city workers in, but it's all legal and it has to be done in court. So if, um, council, it would be something I would look into.
That's why it's there because the price goes up every year. That's the point. It's like a loan shark. That is corrupt.
Final question.
Okay, just wanted to let you know, QCI was discussed in the work session on April 12. You want to look it up on the city's website, it's April 12. Two quick suggestions, we discussed grant writers here tonight. I've talked to Dave Skruto about this, he's a community development director, not only a week ago, he is a part-time person, does not have the resources to write grants, except for ones that the city manager brings to him. There's many more that he can take advantage of. I would ask for a full-time community development director if we have the budget for that. The second solution, if we don't, is to hire interns to do the legwork, to find the grants that he should be writing. Another solution to the problems that was raised here is business and how do we replace the revenue at the landfill? I would charge either the existing incumbents or whoever perhaps may take over to start a council-led think tank with including local residents, not only just Riverview, but other people impacted around, to discuss business improvement opportunities and business development, not only business, but also, as Stephanie talked about, improving existing businesses. Secondly, to discuss with local residents, the quality of life, health and environmental issues related to landfill. That seems to be the biggest hurdle that we have. We need to record these problems and look for solutions. I know that council members are going out and doing that, Chuck Norton and many others. So with those two or three suggestions, my question, and I don't know if we're going to have time for this one, but is, we did not discuss the unfunded liabilities, which I know is another big portion of our gas that we need to fill. So the, the simple question I have is, is the current revenue from the landfill paying any of those unfunded liabilities? And this goes to Bill Toll or any of the incumbents that want to talk to it?
We are now in the process of using excess gas. We are negotiating with the company to take the excess cash, gas and sell it off. That money has been earmarked for the unfunded liability for the city. If we were to get an expansion, that makes it even more attractive on how much money we get. But we are talking probably about a million five at the rough estimate, but we haven't had a chance to have the company in because they're holding off to see what happens with the landfill expansion. They're talking probably about a million, million five a year that we would be putting into the unfunded liability with the hopes of later on that it wouldn't be a drain on the city. In regards to the unfunded liabilities, it just about takes all the income generated to cover the cost of our unfunded liabilities. On the city side, it's been posted, the plan is submitted to the state in reference to how we got to meet that 40% funding. I suggest you take a look at it, you can see what those costs are. Because that's just the cost of your entire real self there. That doesn't include the health care for your existing employees. That is what's causing the financial stress of the city. And our city is like others, they're all going through it. The difference is, we're trying to address it upfront, we're not going to keep on ignoring it.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
I want to thank everyone who came out tonight. Thank you so much for your, the candidates who came out to answer your questions. I realize we may not have gotten to everyone's questions. If you'd like to come and see me, I'll give you my email and phone number. I'll be happy to take your additional questions and put them out on the, email them to the candidates and then put their responses out onto the Riverview Discussion Board on Facebook. Also, if you're interested, we're having a meeting August 10 with Secretary of State, hopeful candidate Christina Bravo. If you're interested in that, you can also see that on our website. I'll give you the information, send your question and we'll give more answers for you. Thank you so much, have a safe night.